All right. Good evening, everyone. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, October 8th, 2025. If we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Glantz.
Present.
Commissioner Minkoff.
Present.
Commissioner Kester.
Here.
Commissioner Prigge.
Will not be here this evening.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Chair Stephenson.
Here.
And Commissioner Allen.
Here.
All right. This time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance, and Commissioner Kester will be leaving us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Invisible.
Is there anyone this evening wishing to speak to the planning commission on a non-agenda item? Okay. The next order of business is the review of the minutes from September 10th, 2025. Did everyone receive a copy of those?
Yes.
And corrections? We'll start with Commissioner Wilcox.
No, I didn't see anything.
All right. Would that entertain a motion to approve?
Chair Stephenson.
Commissioner Kester.
I move that we approve the September 10th minutes of the planning commission.
All right.
Second.
Okay. And we have Commissioner Kester making the motion, and Commissioner Allen seconding that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Opposed? All right. That carries. Great. And now on to the review and discussion. Oh, hearing will be coming later.
Okay. I'll preface this a little bit. So we were here a little back in June. To discuss the grant that we are working on with our wonderful consultants, MIG. And so today is our second discussion work session and kind of an update on where we're currently at on the project. And just a quick update. Remember, this is for design standards along the Halsey corridors. So this is the grant for the Main Street song Halsey code audit. And after that, I will pass it off to Matt. All right. Thanks, Dakota. Good to see y'all here. So yeah, I will provide a pretty brief update.
For the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Matt Hasty with MIG. Do you need my address?
Please.
Okay. It's 506 Southwest Sixth Avenue, Portland, Oregon, 97. It's 204. These are 204 too.
Thank you.
No problem. Yeah. So I will provide a fairly brief update, maybe go to the next slide. I think I've got the kind of the agenda on here. And I don't, but that's okay. I'll just give you kind of a quick reminder on background for the project and then kind of walk through what we've been doing and where we are and some, I'll say, high-level recommendations about some specific topics that we talked about last time related to the the design standards for Halsey. And then I've got, similar to last time, some questions for y'all at the end. But I guess as I go through this, if you have questions for me, you know, just let me know. Interrupt me. Put your hands.
As we go through.
Okay. As we go through is fine. And then I'll ask you some questions at the end, which are kind of, you know, are we on the right track? And a couple of other ones. So as Dakota mentioned, we met with y'all back in June, got some good initial feedback from y'all in terms of things that we needed to keep in mind, things that were important, things that you had concerns about from sort of previous rounds of this project. So that was super helpful, and that has helped guide our work moving forward. Since then, we've looked at your development code. We looked at the previous code amendments, and we prepared what we described as code concepts. So it's generally, here's our approach to addressing some of the issues that we talked about last time. Want to get your feedback on that before we actually go through the process of updating specific code language related to this. So right now, we're still at the kind of, here's, here's the general direction we're headed. And then Dakota and members of the.
CAC.
CAC. Did some tabling at the First Friday event in September and asked some people, asked people some questions related to what we're talking about tonight. So we'll talk to you about what we heard from them as well. So that was great. Get some, some feedback from just kind of literally folks on the street. So, next one. So we're talking about essentially the Halsey corridor west of the downtown. So west of 257th. So just want to note that. I'll say a little bit more about kind of geographic coverage or where these standards might apply towards the end of this presentation, and I'll ask you a question about that. But we're looking again west of 257th in general and could apply all the, that entire area or maybe not all of it. So, yeah, sorry about that. And then the next slide, I think, is just our, kind of our overall schedule and process slide. And so I would say we're kind of in the middle of this diagram. We've, again, kind of identified these preliminary code concepts. We've talked to you once. We're talking to you again. Actually, we're got kind of more meetings with you in here than we showed on this graphic. Had some initial community engagement, and we're getting ready to work on the draft code updates after we have this meeting. Okay. Also, we'll say that my colleague Keegan, not here tonight. He had another engagement sort of previously planned and scheduled. So he apologized for not being here. I think he's actually at Edgefield tonight. So he's actually in Troutdale, just not with us. So next time you see him, give him a moment to think about that. But he's been doing a lot of work on this, so kudos to him on that. So some of the things that we heard last time was that we just, you know, first and foremost, need to make sure that this process and the outcomes and the goals reflect the values of this community, the goals and values of this community, that that's super important. That, kind of the previous process, because it was this multi-city process and a lot of the same recommendations were sort of put forth for all three of the communities, this community didn't feel like they were tailored enough to Troutdale. So we want to make sure we kind of remedy that going through this process, which really is aimed just at Troutdale. This is not a process for all three cities. It's just for Troutdale. One of the issues during that previous process had to do with building heights and some concern about what was being proposed in terms of building heights. And again, want to make sure that what we're proposing this time around is consistent with what you're looking for in Troutdale. And sort of spoiler, we'll tell you what we heard from some of the folks at First Friday related to that topic. We also just had some discussion last time we were here about should these standards apply to portions of the corridor where McMinimans is, the general commercial zone there. So we'll talk a little bit more about that tonight, but that's why you saw kind of all of the corridor west of 257th circled in that earlier slide. And then we also heard that, you know, ultimately, the standard should result in development that's attractive to people in Troutdale, and who want to come from other parts of Troutdale to this corridor. Could be people coming from other parts of the region too, but we're not looking to like necessarily create kind of a regional attractor more than is already there. It's really more worth doing this so that this is an inviting place for Troutdale community members to visit. So those were some of the things we heard more important to y'all last time we met with you. I just wanted to kind of recap those. So in terms of just things we've been doing to, you know, make sure that other folks in the community have an opportunity to see what we're doing and comment on what we're doing. One, we've got information about this up on the city's webpage. Tabling at First Fridays, when we have the opportunity to do that, as we did. Work sessions with y'all. So this is the second one of those, and we'll have more moving forward. And then want to get the Citizens Advisory Committee involved, and they have been involved in terms of helping us reach out to folks and get opinions from other people. So those are some things we're doing towards that end. So as sort of a follow-up to that, and I mentioned it, did some tabling at the First Friday in September. We asked people a number of questions. Partly, we asked them about building heights, and we asked them kind of what they thought about increasing allowable heights in these portions of the Halsey corridor. And generally, the folks who comment on this said, yeah, that seems okay. The majority of them didn't have a significant problem with that. We also asked them kind of a follow-up question, which was if we were to require buildings above a certain height, the front of them to step back a certain distance, if they were going to be taller than 35 feet, would that increase people's level of support for the building heights we were talking about? And an even larger number of them said, yes, that would make them more supportive of allowing increases in building height. So those were the questions we asked.
Yeah. One more second. Commissioner Glantz.
You have a question on this. If the step back is the follow-up, it looks like there were nine to one responses, but there's only five responses on the first question.
I can speak to that. At the tabling event, not everybody wanted to fill out every section of the, our boards that we had. So as I was speaking with them and discussing the project, some of them just felt more inclined to, well, yeah, I prefer if it's over, say, 35 feet as the example, yeah, I'd like that. So they would check that part rather than doing the entire thing all the way through. At First Friday tabling events, it's hard to keep people there for longer than a quick little snippet of time. You know, they're enjoying the, the evening. So that's why you'll see some, some discrepancy in the data that we polled while, for example, yeah, not everybody went, we should, you know, we should have nine and then, you know, one, but not everybody went through it that way. Some people just wanted to mark what they thought and then move along. So, and then we'll just see in some data later on that also reflects where people were choosing more than one kind of option, and we'll discuss that when that comes up.
Anything else, Commissioner Glantz?
Uh-uh, thank you.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yeah, this also raised a question for me. When you asked about increasing building height, did people know what the current building height restriction was? It's like, oh, downtown, it's, you know, it might be 35 feet, but I don't think there's hardly anything that goes that high. It's mostly two-story.
It is. Yeah. And while discussing this with members of the community, I did explain to them what the current building height is, and we happen to be where our booth is, happen to be in a location where we do have a 35-foot tall building. Not all of the buildings are that tall. So that was nice to be able to kind of point and say, hey, see, this building here is 35 feet. And then explaining what then the next step, like if we were to move forward with building heights higher than that, then explaining what a step back was, which we do have a diagram for here in just a second. So that's kind of, that was nice, being able to have a physical representation right in front of us to kind of explain that and let them know what the current is and how high. And it wouldn't, and again, I wanted to make, I made it very clear to everybody who I spoke to that this does not affect the downtown location. So building heights in our downtown will not change. We are not trying to increase them for that, that location. I'm just explaining, hey, this is a 35-foot building, so everything west, like for a development, potentially west of 257th, if they were to go higher than this, then would you like a step back? Or would you even like anything higher than this? And that was part of the discussion process. And for the purposes of these slides, we did kind of paraphrase some things or shorten it just a bit on the slides a little easier. But yeah, I think Dakota had a lot more discussion than what you see on the slide when he was actually talking to folks.
I just know that when we went, did the M1MU M3. That was really a big deal, raising building heights at all. And if we raise them very much, we need to get the Costco bottle of Maalox, because we're going to need it for the heartburn.
I think it was what we found, or what I found was really receptive from the public is the fact that it isn't citywide, that we're not talking citywide on this, and we're not even talking 3, 4, 5. You know, we're not talking multiple said blocks per se. It's just along that corridor. And I think that was more received by the community than just saying, hey, in this zone and this zone, we want to increase the height, or we're discussing, not saying we want to, but we're discussing a potential increase in height. So that was way more receptive, especially given that many community members along that area, they liked the idea, obviously, of the step back. And then some even mentioned, well, I mean, yeah, I don't really want to look at the train tracks in commercial area over there anyway. It's not like you're taking away my view of the bluff or of our beautiful downtown or the river view that you kind of get more of an angle from. So that was something I heard quite a bit as well from the people I was able to speak to.
Do you see there being any type of an issue? I could just see these, right? So like even if it's 45, you're talking like 53 feet with a variance.
We, we won't, we'll get it. We have some more info coming up.
I mean, so you've got this 50-foot tall building, which is fine, and you've got this, and then you hit McMinimans. And then you come out of McMinimans, and then you back up to 50 feet again.
Well, the difference is too with McMinimans in that zone, it already is allowed to go up to 45 feet, because it's commercial.
Right.
So depending on if they ever develop, it wouldn't be necessarily that much of a drop-down, because they already have a height required, a maximum height allowable there. So it wouldn't necessarily. And I mean, if you kind of think about it, that's currently what's happening now with different apartment complexes and things that we have along Halsey. So it really wouldn't change the view. I think if we have great design standards and with our potential for step backs that could be used in a better manner, that would be very, sorry. That would be a nice aesthetically pleasing visual as you're driving down, especially when, when the streetscapes eventually come out.
Commissioner Allen?
Yeah. So question, since this is opposite of what we've been hearing in meetings past, do we know if these were Troutdale residents?
They were.
They were.
Every single one was.
Yes.
Okay. And then the other question would be, can you remind me what the percentage of variance from the maximum height that staff can approve without going to planning commission?
We lowered it. So now it's 15%, which is pretty minimal. Anything that's going to be going, like even say 10-feet height would require to come to planning commission.
Okay.
It was 30 in the past, and then that was one of the first things I did once I got here, is we lowered it to a 15%.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next one. So we also asked people what types of other things they thought were, might be particularly important to see or have in terms of amenities along the street that could be allowed or encouraged or required by the code. And so you kind of see the list of these. The things that got the most votes were pedestrian plazas, outdoor seating, and public art or murals. Other things that people said they valued or thought would be beneficial were weather protection, you know, things like awnings, exterior lighting, larger windows, I think particularly on the ground floor of buildings, especially businesses. That's kind of where we tend to talk about larger windows. And just enhanced architecture, just, you know, not a just totally flat facade or surface of a wall that's facing the street. So, and some of this will come up in the subsequent slides when we talk about some of the standards we're talking about potentially implementing here. And then people have the opportunity to just kind of write down additional notes. And they talked about the importance of quality materials, kind of natural aesthetics. And I assume that kind of has to do with the types of materials being used, wood, stone, things like that. Is that correct? Correct. Yeah. And that are consistent with the downtown. So in terms of thinking about design standards, those are some of the things people supported or were supportive of. All right. So just a few thoughts about kind of, you know, where we could potentially be headed here. So, and we, you'll see kind of in parentheses or in brackets, I guess, some things that are, kind of, we might call this this, or we might pick these numbers, or maybe a different number. So within what we're thinking about in terms of building heights is within this district. And we'll talk again more about where we're applying this, how much of that Halsey corridor along or west of 257th, that the maximum height would be allowed to be 45 feet. Kind of, you know, that's, that's what you could have, sort of no matter what, I guess. It could be increased a little higher, another 10 feet, if you had ground floor commercial within your building, if you had a step back, which we've talked about, and that's kind of what's illustrated here. The picture, I'll say, is like a little funny, because it's a narrow building. But usually, you can have a wider building where you have a step back like that. But that's kind of showing you what we mean by a step back. And if you had a certain number of design elements being selected from a menu of those things. And those could be some of the things we talked about on the previous slide. You had some kind of pedestrian plaza or courtyard or some of the other features we mentioned. And typically, building step backs are measured by stepping back a certain number of feet or stepping back a certain number of feet for each number of feet you go up. Often, it's just one-to-one. So, but it might, it could be a different ratio than that. So it could be for every one foot you go up, you're stepping back a foot, or it could be, you've got to go back a little further, one and a half feet for one foot up or something like that. And that's why we have kind of the Xs and Ys in there, if you were going again above the allowed height. So, so that's, and that's, you know, again, in part based on what we've heard so far and based on what we've been sort of talking about as a team. Any, any questions on that or thoughts beyond what we've already been, what we talked about during the last couple of slides?
I have one comment. When we originally talked about height, I remember a few members of council being adamant that we did not have that. But they were willing to look at height because of the slope to where the actual height to like the front of, you know, Troutdale, not Troutdale Road, but Main Street was still at 35 feet, but then the building could be, have a much greater height from the backside. Has that been discussed? Because that's originally what I thought you meant by step back to where, as the ground goes down, especially like in the area we're trying to develop, where it's much lower than the rest of the city, having height there didn't have the same impact on the city as it would right along Main Street.
That hasn't necessarily been discussed as far as like with the public. However, how we measure height as far as planning goes is from the completed ground floor. So a good example we can look at where there was a variance requested and received is for the Fox Ridge Apartments, because it is on a very steep incline, correct? So the maximum height along the, along Halsey is a little taller, but that's just because it's so much higher in the back end, where this would, you'd still have that. So say, for example, they were to go up to, just an example here, go up to 55 feet, they would still be required to have its step back from the Halsey facade, even though they have a slope, because it's from the ground floor completion. So that doesn't mean the ground floor that's at elevation. It means it's the ground floor of, the lowest ground floor that's completed. So if you were to have something like this on the opposite side of Halsey, so say, the north side of Halsey, that's where, again, the hill slopes away, then you would have the height maximum being from the, from the lowest point, or there's a ratio, and the ratio can get a little confusing in order to how to calculate it, depending on how the building is oriented. So this still would be able to have that. It would just, and what it does is instead of closing off and narrowing kind of the feel of the corridor with taller buildings on either side, it opens it up a little more, so it allows more sunlight and makes it feel a little more open, so you're not as closed in if you were to have, say, buildings of 45 feet on either side, or just using this example, say, 55, even though we haven't discussed that. You know, that, that doesn't feel as closed in. It opens up the feel of the corridor and allows the extra height for development. Because I know previously what we had heard from the research is, you know, developers aren't wanting to do necessarily mixed use because they're losing the apartment spaces on that ground floor for commercial. It's like, well, this is, this is a way that they could still do that without just doing 55 feet and closing off that corridor. So it's kind of, this is kind of taking that and rethinking that concept.
It seems backwards if it's on the north side, where I'd almost want, you know, the side that's on the higher elevation to have less total height versus the height that, you know, has more on the north side.
And again, this isn't just a cut and dry. It's dependent on if they have, you know, a five of the eight, if, if a developer's willing to meet those said standards to go up in height. So it's not just a cut and dry, yep, you can go ahead and build up to, say, 55 feet. It's just a, if they want to meet all these standards, then they can, and then that's up to them to design it and make sure the design meets what our code will have in place.
So if that side that would be facing Main Street, let's say that's commercial, and then on the backside, that's parking underneath, a little bit like how some of the, you know, tall buildings are currently on Main Street on the north side, where there's parking underneath.
And, and we'll talk a little bit about parking here in just a second. But yeah, that is kind of one of the ideas that we would have, where you could put parking behind instead of on the street or in the front facade, it would be behind, and if it slopes away, then that could be, you got parking down below. And so that way, it's tucked under parking. And again, that's all based on design possibilities of a developer. And so it kind of opens it up a little bit, but also still adds a little bit of restriction as far as we want it to look a certain way. If you're willing, willing to meet said standards, then we're willing to work with you. If you're not willing to meet said standards, then you have to meet based on.
I was just going to say that with Fox in particular, that was an interesting one, because at the time, we had 30% variance, which allowed it to go taller. And so it was processed initially as a type 2. It was bumped to a type 3. There was quite a bit of community input. It was approved by the commission. And still to this day, we have people going to council complaining about that development. Being too big, too tall.
Did they get their variance?
They did.
At 30%.
I know, it's just.
Well, they wouldn't get the same variance now, because that's the only reason they asked, right? Because if it went from 30% down to 15, then.
Right.
Result in that telebuilding. And also for pure residential, because I'm going to need some of these requirements.
Correct.
I was strictly thinking about the height could be met. Okay.
All right. So next one. So these are some standards related to kind of location of parking and also to what are called frontage requirements, which has to do with kind of how much of the building is up towards the street or the sidewalk, as well as perimeter landscaping. So this is fairly typical, as you do want some portion of the building to be closer to the street, just to make it easier for people to access the building. So we're looking at potentially, you know, requiring a certain percentage of it to be up to the street, and that you would limit the amount of parking that's to the side, that's sort of directly off the street. You typically wouldn't allow parking between the sidewalk and the building, because you don't want people kind of walking across where people are driving through parking areas. But you could have parking either on the side or the back, but you wouldn't want it to be sort of like 20% of the lots building and 80% is parking. So this would sort of require a certain amount of the building to be up towards the street. You could also vary that frontage requirement a little bit or provide some exceptions if folks are providing something like a courtyard or a plaza or a gathering space. So that's another way to think about this. And then finally, you would want to have some, or we would recommend some perimeter landscaping requirements for the parking areas, particularly adjacent to the sidewalks, so you're kind of like softening that. You know, people aren't walking right by the fronts of the cars, but they've got a little bit of a buffer between the sidewalk and the parking area. So you've got some landscaping in those areas, and that's kind of what that graphic is showing over on the right side. So those are kind of the things that we're thinking about. So those are kind of the things that we're thinking about in terms of how to address the relationship of the building, the sidewalk slash street, where parking is located and kind of how landscaping works to soften some of those transitions as well.
Question.
Yeah.
Commissioner. Yes, thank you. Where on here have you taken bike lane into consideration?
Bike lane, that's going, that would be part of the design of the street itself. And we're not really here to kind of update, there's the, this is the streetscape design, which, which indicates where the bike lane would be. We're really just looking at what happens past the sidewalk on somebody's property where the buildings are being built. So the location of bike lanes is guided by the streetscape design, which is another process that you all have gone through recently.
Right. And I believe I sent everyone a link to the Halsey streetscape design just a few weeks ago.
And that one cleared this, it's on the TSP, it went to council, they approved it, the county put it on their TSP. So it's.
This is more of a piggyback on the, on what's, hopefully we will eventually be done for the corridor as far as streetscapes go.
But there are bike lanes.
Yes, there are bike lanes proposed for all.
Bike lanes, and I just.
Multi-use paths.
Yeah. And I just can't remember, the configuration of where the bike lane, bike lane is varies by section of corridor. So that's partly why I couldn't say, oh, well, it's right here because it does vary depending on which section of the corridor you're in. Our firm worked on that project, not on the streetscape design element of it, but kind of the land use side, so.
But the county was kind of pretty adamant about how they wanted it to.
So that, that process could involve all three cities in the county.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Other thoughts or questions on this?
Well, it's like a lot of frontage on there, like if you owned a, I don't know, they're probably vary quite a bit, but if you have a small lot on Halsey, how wide would that be?
Really daring.
Yeah, varies based on the zoning in that location. However, most of, most of the zoning in that location is either MU1, there's some HDR in there, and then I believe there's some LDR2 or MDR. So it kind of varies, but it wouldn't be below, I think, 30 feet, I think is the minimum. Except for MU1, that varies depending on the type of, say, housing, or if you're doing mixed use, then the, the frontage requirement that you need for something like that varies. So I wouldn't say, I mean, I can pull up our code really quickly and take a look.
I'm just looking at this, and if you had a lot, let's say that's 30 feet wide, you couldn't do it.
I would say, you know, this kind of development, when we're thinking about kind of mixed use development, we are mainly thinking about somewhat larger properties or, or a situation where someone has consolidated properties to, to create a smaller lot. Because you're right, I mean, you could still kind of do this maybe, but what you would have would be if, if you wanted to get somebody back behind the building, you'd have maybe a 10-foot accessway to get back there in 20 feet of building if it was a 30-foot wide lot. And these standards aren't geared as much to that. I mean, it's not like they couldn't work at all, but that's not really the, kind of the intent.
So this wouldn't apply if you had a smaller lot?
It, it could still apply in terms of, you know, a minimum amount of the building that, that front, that was at the frontage. But you could provide some exceptions for narrower lots as well. And that's, so we're working on a similar set of standards over in West Lynn on Highway 43. And that same question came up over there. They have, in that area, there are a number of kind of smaller, narrower, you know, residential lots. And one of the comments was, this is going to be really hard to implement there, these types of standards. And so we said, well, you know, for those narrower lots, we might, we might, it might make sense to have some exceptions to some of these standards. So I think, good point, that's something we can think about here as well.
And on that, some of our, like, building frontage is a ratio, it's not always required foot, feet. It could be a ratio of X amount of percentage has to be fronted and then could go back. So it could change. Now, if you have like a fairly narrow lot, that percentage may not work. It just, it might not. But depending on the type of development, and then again, there can be some exceptions for smaller lots. Typically with this, we're thinking of larger type of development, mixed use type development that would be going in, in the available lots to be developed along the halls.
I just wouldn't want to see us get into a situation where it ends up being a measure 35 deal because we've got something that can't be developed.
Yeah. I think a really good point, for sure. Yeah. Sure. Thank you.
And, and this, I'm sure is, is partially just me needing a bit of education, but for design elements like, like sidewalk seating for, for like a restaurant or something, how does that figure in to these, these frontage requirements, but also the mat, the, the setback requirements? I mean, because tables and seating takes up a fair amount of space. And if you're going to allow for that out in front of a building, then there's, aside from your setback requirements, there's also just on the sidewalk, you have ADA limitations as far as what you have to leave available for, for traffic. So how, how does that all work together?
So basically for seating and things of that nature, that can be built or, or placed within the setback, it cannot be placed in the public right of way. So for example, if just on this diagram here, say this was commercial, maybe there's a coffee shop on one of the corners and they want to have some outdoor seating, and maybe this is a little plaza here. They can put tables and chairs in this 10-foot setback, but they cannot overs, they cannot spill over into the walkway. And that's for ADA response, requirements as well as, because that needs to be clean and clear for pedestrian access. But they can be placed because how our setback requirements work is any structure over a larger size cannot be placed within a setback. And the tables, chairs are much smaller than that requirement.
So like some of the things, I'm, I'm visualizing some of the things that I've seen, I've seen businesses do with outdoor seating is, is build the things like temporary structures around or covers for those. And is that something that we have to watch out for? Or is, is that, is that something that's explicitly disallowed by the code?
It's not something that's disallowed by the code, it's something that we do keep an eye out for. We typically, if it's over a certain size, it requires, requires a building permit. And typically, if something comes in for a building permit, then either our building techs send it to us, or we also review those types of building permits as planners. So for example, let's, we can give a good example of Lowlos Downtown, how they kind of built an awning off and they closed it in. And there we had a discussion like, oh, is that expanding the structure? And as long as they're not coming out past that setback and onto, depending on, you know, what our setback requirement is, then they're able to build that and that's fine. As, and you know, we try to help, like, try to make it look good, you know, let's not do cinder blocks with some four by fours in there and a roof on top. You know, like, let's, let's make sure this is anchored. And again, if it's over a certain size, then it does require a building permit, which they then have to go through and make sure it's structurally sound. So I think it really, then it depends on what they're proposing. So for example, on this, if they were to have awnings off the, come off of the primary structure, awnings are fine as long as we do have an awning requirement. So we do have an awning requirement which is only allowed to extend so many feet into the setback. I believe it's up to three feet of the property or of the property line, but that's not, because that's not considered expanding the structure forward in our code. So there are certain aspects within our code that some things do directly play into and other things where we would have to look at it. And then that's also why the code is not meant to be black and white, but more gray, is we can look at it and see, does that meet, does that not meet? Yes, they can do this, no, they can't.
Yeah, because part, part of me is, is thinking that in practice for something like outdoor seating to make it attractive, 10 feet is not much. So I mean, it's, it.
A row of cables. Yeah. And I think if somebody wanted to go beyond that, really, they could use some portion of the area beyond the setback. And you can, oh, you could allow for that to be sort of an outdoor space within the development that's kind of between the max setback and the edge of the building as long as the rest of the, like that little sort of space in there, as long as the rest of the building's meeting the frontage requirement. But you could, you could have that be essentially something they could do as an exception to the minimum frontage requirement too. So, so I think it, you would have the flexibility to do those kind of things. And yeah, 10 feet isn't a ton, but it is at least enough to get like kind of a row of tables and chairs in there.
And I think it also depends on how large the building is, how many, you know, or how many businesses are they, are they proposed down there? If it's one, say, say a restaurant and it takes up the entirety of the ground floor of like, say, a smaller building, then this, more than likely, this kind of outdoor plaza area would have probably be a covered eating area, maybe with like a fire pit type deal. If it's multiple small businesses, say coffee shops or, or little boutiques, then you might have some chairs on one little bit and some chairs over here. And then this might be a community area that say the owner of the building wants to be open seating for, for folks to come out, and maybe it's covered, maybe it's not. So I think it really comes down to potential design for buildings. And that's the thing is, that's what's, this project does encompass is, these are great questions and a lot of it is we have answers for, but really it depends on what comes in on a design, what someone's proposing. Because then we can look at that, like if they're doing a larger building, then we can look at as a whole. If they're planning on doing a smaller one, there's a little bit of a smaller one here, it's like, okay, well, how are those going to mesh together? And while they're two separate projects, we have the ability to do that still as planners.
All right. Go to the next one. The other thing that, the other types of standards or one of the other types of standards that's included in kind of what we're looking at are massing standards. So really, this is just trying to prevent a building from not being too large, you know, from not feeling too bulky, too massive. And so the standards that were previously identified that at the moment we're not suggesting changes to, but we could, one would be a maximum building length of the current proposed standards, 150 feet. So you don't have buildings, any one building longer than 150 feet. Another one would be that you have changes in the facade of the, the depth of the facade of the building. So you kind of come along the front of the building and then you bump inwards by a certain amount, every certain number of feet. And I can't remember kind of what the current potential numerical standards are for that. But it basically is sort of breaking up that front plane of the building. So again, it just doesn't look as massive. Heights, obviously, you know, another standard that kind of impacts the mass of the building, we already talked about that. And then just having potentially some maximum footprint sizes for buildings. So again, the building isn't just so large, it, it just feels like it sort of dwarfs everything around it. So the current standard we have been looking at or are looking at is 20,000 square feet. That's essentially like your, it's half an acre, you know? So it's sort of like half, I don't know what the typical block size is in Troutdale, but in some cities, the, maybe the block's 250 feet by 250 feet, so it's like half a block, you know, in, in an area where lots are that size.
And to put that in the context, our current MU2 standards for vertical mixed use, the maximum building footprint is 20,000 feet. So that would just go along.
Which is more than what you've got already.
Like, would you ever have any ADA issues? It just, I'm looking at like an elevator.
For, if you're, if you were to have, say, larger buildings, yeah. I mean, all buildings are, need to be designed with ADA accessibility.
Have you seen this kind of doing this Lego thing?
That's just kind of a depiction also of setbacks.
I would, I would say, you know, kind of, this is not the best diagram to show in terms of like, the numbers on there don't mean anything. This is just kind of trying to show you how height and whether the building steps back, the overall size of the building, whether there's, again, kind of bump ins in the building, just affect the overall mass of the building. But these numbers, I should have said that from the get-go, are not meant to be the numbers that we're proposing here. It's just sort of a graphic we use to sort of think about. When we talk about bulk and massing of a building, what are we talking about here? This is kind of how it looks and feels in terms of the, the total size of the building. So yeah, good question.
And a good example for articulation is our downtown. We currently have something along those lines in our downtown code. So you don't have just one flat building facade for the length of our downtown. We do require, that's why certain buildings, they're flat, and then all of a sudden now your entries actually step back from the property and then that goes to the next building as well. And then they bump out and continue. So that's just so it doesn't look like just one long building. It actually has different depths to it and things of that nature that give it more of a multi-building look rather than a single building look.
Adds, adds a lot of character, really. Commissioner Glanz.
I have a question and kind of relates to this as well. What's the drawback if somebody wants to have more than a 10-foot setback? I would think having buildings that are of varying depths gives the location more character. It provides, you know, more space where they may have, you know, outdoor statues that have different, you know, seating around them. There's lots of different things you could do that would allow for that to be really attractive, but it seems really limited when we only allow a 10-foot setback.
There is no drawback necessarily. Like a 10-foot setback allows it to still be close enough to the street for pedestrian access, but that doesn't mean that a developer is going to build a full length right at the 10 feet. That you can design it with other entry, like, you know, entry points or areas for statues or something. That's just the mac, the, the minimum setback requirement. So for example, if you have a apartment complex that is mixed, vertical mixed use, you may have the initial entry point on there, but as it goes, it might step back with some, like the glass windows step back and you might have a little green space, or maybe even that's where a stormwater swale is. And that's kind of like a natural vegetation area from the inside, you can see that. And then it comes back out, or you have it, a portion of it's right up, but actually it steps back a little bit further. So again, that kind of comes down to the, the design of whoever is looking at the site and how they want to look at it, they just can't go any closer than 10 feet. But there's nothing to say they can't be further back than 10 feet.
The diagram said maximum 10 feet setback.
Yeah, we might need to just update that. I, I think this is a diagram from another, another code that we pulled it from just to illustrate the concept, not to illustrate the actual number. So I'm going to, more caveats and disclaimer in the next presentation.
So, yeah, just imagine it says minimum setback.
Okay.
Let me expose that.
And there are some communities that do have a maximum. And, and it really is to try to kind of improve pedestrian and visual connectivity to the building and to the spaces within the building. So the places that do have those maximum setbacks, that's really kind of what they're trying to do. And, you know, to answer the question about, is there a drawback? I don't, I don't know how important that is here, but that's what, you know, some places are trying to achieve.
I just, I like it when it's set back a little bit further because it always feels pretty narrow when you've got the street and the sidewalk and you're trying to maneuver around and parking. I prefer that it's pushed back a little bit more just to give everybody more space.
Yeah, I think, and there's a lot of factors there too that impact it, you know, how wide is the street itself? Is there some topography, et cetera? So, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right.
Any other questions on this one before we move on?
I don't think I have too many more, just in terms of a time check. But, so the other things to think about, and Dakota talked about this already, and we talked about it a little bit in terms of some of the questions we ask people about during tabling. There were kind of a variety of building design standards, excuse me, that were identified in some of the earlier work. And for the most part, I don't think we kind of heard people were, had issues with most of those. So we, we're not at the moment proposing sort of a big change in, in some of those. But we are looking at some changes in how those would be applied. So in the earlier iteration of this, there was a somewhat complicated, or I will say a more complicated menu system associated with. a more complicated menu system associated with the design standards. It was sort of like, pick two out of three of this thing, and three out of five of this thing, and seven out of 10 of this thing. And, or actually, it wasn't that, it was, it was a point system, excuse me. It was a point system where it's like, you need to get this many points, and you need to get this many, I think, from these different categories. And so that's not how your current code is set up. Your current code is set up, at least in other, some of your other zones, so that you are picking from a set of design elements rather than trying, using this point system, which is a little more complicated. So we would suggest doing something that is actually, you know, closer in alignment with what your existing code does in other zones. And, but some of the types of design elements, again, in terms of things that you get sort of extra credit for, would be things like courtyards or plazas. Some of the things that would be optional, required things, would be things like pedestrian seating, sort of architectural details on the facade of the building, things like that. So, and we can kind of come back to you with a longer list of things and say, hey, is there anything here that causes you concern or that, from your perspective, would be particularly valuable or, or good to include or require? And that's the other thing you could do is sort of say, hey, we're going to require a certain set of base standards, and above that, you need to pick this number from this list. So.
A good example of this is with our, like, ADU standards. There's, I think there's a list of 10, you need to, you need to select six. Or I think, I think that's also just design standards with our MU1 and MU2 zone. So that's rather than doing a point system, we already have a select X number from the following list, and then incorporate that in your proposed design. And I think it, like Matt said, it's just easier to keep it consistent with how our current code is, rather than everywhere else in the code, it's a, pick a number of these to, hey, in area A, B, and C, you need to have a total of five points for a maximum of 15 in order to move forward with this development. It just gets a little convoluted and a little confusing. And I think then it comes to, how is that going to actually pan out? And how's that going to look? Where here we have set design, we have set design standards that we are approved by Planning Commission, that we'd like to see in the future, and we can keep that consistent with the city. And that is something we heard a lot in tabling, is everybody likes how the downtown looks. And the goal is to have that feel, you know, across 257th with this project. So if they like how downtown looks, we can look at those standards that we have and either add some, change some, and go from there.
And so the other thing we talked about is sort of where these would, these standards would apply. I mean, they would apply along Halsey, again, not citywide. They would, I think, most likely apply in your MU1 and MU2 districts. You've got some residential districts in between there and the general commercial district. I'm assuming they wouldn't necessarily apply in there, but, but they also could apply in the general commercial district, again, where McMinimans is and where they own property on the other side of the road to the north. So that's kind of a question we have for you. I think my last slide is just some questions we could ask that one right now. Any thoughts about application of some of these standards in anything outside of the MU1 or MU2 zone? Does it make sense to apply some of these things and have a more sort of cohesive set of standards in the general commercial zone as well, or, or not? And anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, and because we had, we had discussed, we were discussing this a little bit earlier on, and, you know, especially the first time we came here in June, there was a lot of discussion of, you know, we want to work with McMinimans. They're, as we mentioned before, they're notoriously difficult to get a hold of, to bring them to the table, and they do what they do really well. So there is the mixture that we were discussing, that Matt and I were talking about, is we want it to be a cohesive corridor, but at the same time, we don't necessarily want to step on the toes of McMinimans when what they do, they do so well. So that's why we were kind of discussing, that's why I wanted to bring it back and say, is this something that we don't want to move forward with as far as in that McMinimans area, in the general commercial zone? Or should we move forward with this with the caveat that if McMinimans does it, maybe it's a different set of standards, or maybe we work with them a little bit more because we don't want to change their aesthetic of what they're doing? Because we know that what they do, they keep it kind of cohesive in their own design and their own unique way. So I think that's just something that we wanted to bring back and get everyone's opinion on.
Are you looking for opinion now?
Go ahead, Commissioner Minkoff.
Thank you. Well, I would say that McMinimans is an exception. I think McMinimans stands out as unique. I think that they have a very nice design standard. So I, I don't see an issue with accepting, making an exception for the McMinimans property in this. But otherwise, everything else should have the, the same standard. So downtown and beyond, the, the whole idea is we're trying to extend the look of downtown, as you mentioned, Dakota, past 257th. Kind of make it look like an extended downtown. So we already kind of missed that opportunity, I think, potentially with the apartment buildings that have already been constructed. But everything else could fall in line with what the downtown looks like, with the exception of McMinimans.
Okay, Commissioner Glantz.
I'm fine leaving McMinimans as is, only because you never know, you know, a year from now, something could happen, and they could decide to sell the property, and Lord knows what would happen then. So I think leaving it as is is probably better. And the other thing, too, is I don't know that I'd want that section to have the same standards as a city center, because it's like, you get out of city center, past a couple blocks, and that's pretty heavy residential. And so to go from, you know, what looks like a downtown and then to kind of a more residential area, I think blends nicely as is with McMinimans, which is pretty, it, it blends in well. And I think trying to put commercial frontage along there would really feel out of place.
I'm not sure what the legalese are of, you know, because like you had mentioned, like, what if McMinimans decides to sell everything north of Halsey? And I'm not sure what the legalese is, are, if we can add that into our code of, you know, except.
I'd say just leave it like that, too.
Like, so I don't know what that, how that would work. So that's, I'm not up to speed.
Well, I, I, I would add, this is Commissioner Minkoff, that the exception would extend to the current owners of the property. And if another owner buys and continues to manage it, we could go back and say, okay, we'll extend your exception. But if someone buys it to tear it down and redo, but now they've been accepted, so that, so that the exception carries with the owner of the property, not to the property itself.
Wouldn't it happen by default if we just don't include it?
Don't believe we can do that.
I don't think, I don't, that's what I'm saying, I don't think.
That was why I asked to do that. Like, a good question for your legal household.
Because that was, that was kind of what I was mentioning, is I'm not sure if we could write in there the exception for McMinimans properties, but then, then if they sell, I don't, I don't know, that's not like a legal question with, I don't even know if we can have that in our code, because our code needs to be clear and objective. And that could be, that could be perceived as giving, you know, leeway or benefits to one owner, so that's why I'm not entirely sure of.
Yeah, and we couldn't, we couldn't do it from a standpoint of conditioning it in, into the development code. And the only other thing you could do is some type of overlay that would make it like a non-conforming use or something, if it didn't fit. But then if you did that, that would be specifically for that one business, and that would make that problematic.
I think, I think you just wanted to decide, are you going to apply these standards to this area now or not? And if you're not, you could, you could choose to apply these standards to that area later.
We could always come back and.
From coming back and.
Expand it.
Standing, future expanding or applying this set of standards, yeah, down the line.
Commissioner Kestner.
I mean, I'm generally of two minds on this. I, one, is, is I, I do very much agree with Commissioner Glantz in that those, those blocks of residential do kind of create a, a visual transition point from the, I mean, what we're, what we're talking about at, at the beginning of the Halsey corridor into whatever Edgefield is, is going to make. But at the same time, I, I'm also very much a proponent of, when we're talking about design standards and, and such, simplicity is a good thing, and consistency is a good thing. And I don't really see a downside to extending it into the, into the Edgefield property, because I cannot conceive of a possible scenario where McMinimans would want to do something that you don't like to see according to these design standards. Because as Dakota said, I mean, Edgefield has a, has a very nice aesthetic, and, and I think we can, we can protect ourselves if, I mean, lightning strikes and the Edge, and McMinimans organization goes up in smoke and that commercial area gets bought by somebody else. But we also trust that they're going to, we're, we're going to work with them, and they're going to do what, something that we like to see. That, any of that made any sense.
And of course, what you don't know is what their agreement with the county is anyhow.
I understand, too.
I, I think, another just thought is, we might want to have a little more discussion about this in terms of what are the standards that are applied in that general commercial zone now versus what do we ultimately recommend in this Halsey corridor, mixed-use overlay, or whatever we end up calling this, you know, this new zone? And see how much they differ, and see if it makes sense, understanding what the differences are, whether to apply them also to the commercial, the general commercial area. And I think, you know, right now, McMinimans is what McMinimans is on the south side of the road, but there isn't really anything on the north side of the road. And that's where you could see in the future some change if they or somebody else decides to develop that property further. And then if that property gets developed further, you know, are the general commercial standards fine as is? Or do you want to see something that's, you know, more similar to what we're talking about here? And so maybe we, that would be a helpful thing. We're not really, I'm not always prepared to sort of talk about that in a lot of detail, but does that sound like a helpful approach to talk about this a little bit more down the road?
I think so.
All right. Next one, I think the next one, yes, it's my discussion questions, which you've already pretty much answered, I think. So I guess not all of them. We did talk about the third one, so we've already kind of talked about that. And the others are just, you know, do these standards, as I've described them, make sense? You know, do they sync up with what you think is important or would be helpful? Is there anything missing I didn't talk about? So those are the other questions. And again, I think mostly we just wanted to get your feedback on what I presented, and I appreciated all the questions and comments on that. So I guess, any thoughts about these other questions or anything else is what I would ask at this point.
Commissioner, is there anything? Commissioner Glantz, look like.
Yep. I think the only thing that's really missing is I think we need to account for slope relative to height. And I think that, like, in some of these locations, the way that we're looking at height, I wouldn't want it any, you know, I wouldn't want that extended height over 35 feet unless it was something where, like, up against a street value and the backside could be longer because it doesn't visually, and it's not just from a step back, it, you know, you can still have the same flat top or a step back, whatever you want. But I want to accommodate for geographic height and slope, because I think that makes a big difference. I don't want to go in and, you know, put up all these tall buildings that block everybody's view. I think everybody, you know, is pretty, they don't just sit out here because it's windy and, and quiet. A lot of people want that view. So I don't want to be in a position that we just block it for everybody, and, hi, now you've got, you know, some giant buildings across the street from you.
That was a good statement.
Go ahead, Rich.
I was just saying, that was a good statement.
Yeah, that's something, definitely something we can all get.
And to, to kind of piggyback off of what Sandy is saying, I mean, the, the height, the difference in slope, I mean, going, looking for people looking north makes all the difference in the world. And I can, I can say from personal experience, there was, just using the home forward development as an example, there was a lot of concern, looking at the initial design, as to whether or what sort of impact those buildings were going to have on, on our view, looking north. And because of the difference in the slope, the impact was significantly less than, than was anticipated. So in, in practice, and we were afraid it was going to block everything, and in practice, it really only blocked our visibility to the train tracks and industrial north Troutdale. So we can still see across the river, and, and that's fine. So I'm, yeah, I, the, the realities of the grade make all the difference in the world.
Good. All right. That's all I have. Appreciate the time and the comments, and we'll be back when we're further on.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Yeah.
And with that, I would ask if there's any public comment.
Yes.
Come on forward. You could state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Beth Landon. Mom and I are residents here of Troutdale. We both own homes on Beaver Creek Lane. Thank you for having an open meeting. I've never been to a planning commission meeting, so this was very eye-opening. I appreciate the amount of effort you're putting into it. And when you showed the last map and I saw what a small section you're talking about, that was interesting. I completely agree with and appreciate the comments about obstructing the views of the people who've chosen to, to buy in the area. That's great. I would also, two questions. One, it looks like the community engagement has been about 10 people who attended the first September event. Is there going to be any effort to talk to more people, such as the people who could have their views blocked and would be the most likely to walk down and access the services? Or the, whatever the commercial development is?
Yes. Yes, I am planning on doing a mailer that will go out to properties along the Halsey corridor. We also have our website up and available. It's on, it's on the city website, and that has my contact information to reach out to me if you have comments and concerns. And I'm happy to discuss or write down your, your thoughts, questions, as we continue to move through, forward with this. And then also, our CAC meetings are always a wonderful opportunity to come and voice any concerns or questions as, or if you meet any of our CAC members out there in the community, to bring it up with them as well, because they are also hopefully out there talking with folks about it.
Well, and that sounds like community having to find you and knowing that you're on a website, which I didn't know existed until 10 seconds ago. That's different than you going out.
It was also in our newspaper as well, but again, yeah, that's kind of.
Okay. Second, just an observation, there's been some discussion about keeping the parking attractive, and that's lovely. That's, that's very, and it's very thoughtful, something I hadn't thought about too much. I would just suggest that you consider it being adequate, because in the main corridor of Troutdale, it's very attractive, the way it's a block back and on the side, and it's inadequate. And this is, people are not going to park on the far side of 257th to walk over, right? And this is, people are not going to park on the far side of 257th to walk over, right? So you're going to have, I would suggest you consider more realistic parking needed.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Okay, and again, this is a discussion item. Is there anyone online wishing to comment? Not seeing any? Thank you. Ready for this one?
I am, let me go ahead and share my screen.
I got an official-
Yeah, let's do that.
All right. This agenda item is LU 00152025, which is Town Center Overlay Map and Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments. And before we open the public hearing, I'd like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission, the procedures we will be following for the public hearing. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen member for the review of land use applications and various related land use matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. This is a type four application and the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the city council who will be making the final decision. Outside judicial and legislative public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan Development Code or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Anyone who raises an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. Okay, as a final note, if anyone's planning to testify, please state your name and address for the record and speak clearly so that your comments are picked up by the recording. Okay, and before we open the hearing this evening, does anyone have any bias to declare? Because it's legislative, we don't have any ex parte contact to worry about on this subject. No bias? Anyone? Okay. All right, with that, we will open case file LU 00152025, Town Center Overlay Map Amendments. Good evening, Ms. Palmer.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner, Chair and Commissioners. Hold on one second. There we go, my computer was a little slow to load up. Thank you. So tonight before you, we have some land use and zoning map amendments as well as a few amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, all regarding the town center and the town center boundary. So tonight, sorry, I need to fix my computer here. So tonight, Planning Commission, your job is to review and consider and make a recommendation to the city council on the proposed map amendments and the comprehensive plan text amendment. The applicable criteria are in your staff reports. They are code chapters two, six, 15, and Oregon land use goals. And then we have Metro Code and as well as, I already said, the Oregon land use goals. So why is this request being made? Staff, we learned that the town center overlay shown on the adopted 2040, 2020, 2040 Town Center Plan actually did not go through the proper land use process. It was adopted to actually amend the city's zoning code and comprehensive plan map. And we wanted to go back into our comprehensive plan and make sure that the language centered on the town center boundary was reflective of that plan document that was adopted in 2022. 2022. So implications of approving the request tonight. So this request makes the Town Center Plan document consistent with the city's zoning map and comprehensive plan map. And that is pretty important when it comes to planning. We like to have consistency between plans and plan maps. And then the text describing the town center boundary in the comp plan, also, we wanted to kind of refresh that to make sure that it's reflecting the town center plan as well. The request does not change the underlying zoning or uses within these parcels. And we are looking to remove three parcels from the town center overlay. And all of those will still remain general commercial. And so the three parcels that we're looking at removing are the two parcels north of Halsey, just north of the Edgefield site. Two parcels are owned by McMinimans and the other parcel is owned by Maltlemah County. And that's where the family shelter is. I do want to say that I have reached out to McMinimans about this process and proposal and I did speak to them and they, they had nothing, you know, bad to say and they were actually quite happy that this boundary was being adjusted so the parcels to the north and the Edgefield site would actually all be consistent with one another. This would make all of the McMinimans parcels fall outside of the town center boundary. So they would all kind of fall within the same regulatory framework. So the procedure that we looked at, which is in your staff report, this is a type four land use application. You're making a recommendation to council. Council is the final ultimate decision-making body. We are currently tentatively scheduled to introduce this amendment package to council on October 28th and then the second hearing would be in November. We did do public engagement and notice. We had this project up on the project page on our website. We did our newspaper notice, our online notice. We went to the CAC, actually in September, to actually discuss this proposed change back last month. And we sent our Measure 56 notice to all affected properties, which is required by Oregon State Land Use Law. And then we also noticed Steel, CD, and Metro. And we did receive a public comment back from Metro that the proposed amendments tonight do not, they're in compliance with Metro Code. So we're not negatively affecting, you know, state land use laws or Metro's code. So the proposed findings, we have three criteria in our development code when it comes to changing comprehensive land use text. Here they are. And those findings are found in your staff report and all the criteria have been met. We have criteria when it comes to zoning map amendments. They are also on this slide and they're in Development Code Chapter 6.1400. All the criteria have been met as shown in the staff report. And then we have comprehensive land use criteria when it comes to making comprehensive land use map changes. And we have a whole set of criteria for that as well. And as you probably read your staff report, staff has found that all the criteria have been met for that amendment as well. So this slide, this actually shows the town center overlay that was adopted in the 2020, 2040 Town Center Plan. This is the boundary. And then, so you can see on this slide, and I know this may be very hard to see, but our current 2019 adopted comprehensive plan map has this little tiny baby blue line. That's the town center line. And it does include those parcels north of the current McMinimans Edgefield. And the proposed change is to adopt the boundary that's in our town center plan. And the same with our zoning map. So this is, our current zoning map shows the correct town center boundary. It just did not go through the current land use process for that change. And that's why we're here tonight, to make that legal. So Planning Commission action. You can motion to recommend approval to the city council. We can look at making some edits tonight to the staff report and findings. And we could, or Planning Commission can motion to, you know, deny the application and you can revise the findings. Or you can make a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain. We did get some comments from Commissioner Wilcox and I'm just going to go over these comments that were received. I'm going to, Commissioner Wilcox had a question on page 21 and we're going to come back to that question here in just a minute. But on page 29, Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Wilcox had suggested changing the Columbia Gorge outlets instead of stating like factory stores, which was in the comp plan, just changing it to Columbia Gorge outlets. And instead of saying the Troutdale Urban Renewal Site, known as the Confluence, just referring it to Troutdale's urban renewal site. Staff, I don't, I think those are fine changes, but I'm going to let Planning Commission discuss those changes as we go through, as we go through this application this evening. On page 29, Commissioner Wilcox said, "In" should be, "In" should be the word "on" in that sentence and staff agrees and to delete the hyphen over the period, staff agrees with that. We can make that change. On page 29, he had a question about the word "justify" in that sentence that was used on page 29. And that sentence on page 29 actually is the same sentence that is found on page six of the Town Center Plan, the very last sentence, when it says how to use this plan. And it reads, "The plan may be used as a reference to justify future land use decisions or policy initiatives, but is not a regulatory document." So that sentence was pulled directly from the 2020, 2040 Town Center Plan. Of course, Planning Commission can have a conversation about changing the word "justify." I just want to throw that out there because it was a comment made by Commissioner Wilcox. And then, of course, on page 30, the council hearing date should not be October 8th and that is correct. At the time that I was writing this draft ordinance, I did not know, I didn't have a scheduled date for the hearing for council, so that was kind of just put in as a placeholder. So with that, if the commission or chair, if you have any questions, I'm-
Okay, questions for staff? Not seeing any. So I'm not exactly sure when it was, but we made a change to those properties north of Halsey to accommodate McMinimans having the ability to grow crops. They came in with the county and we changed that so they would have that purpose.
And this does not affect that land use decision. The town center boundary does not affect that decision. It does not affect the current zoning that's in place or the current uses.
The current zoning is commercial?
Correct.
Okay. So this would be a use that's probably expired now. It hasn't been acted upon.
The agricultural use? It has, actually, it has been acted upon. They just had a big opening not too, not too long ago, celebrating the urban farm that's there.
On the north side?
On the north side.
All right, Commissioner Glantz?
Yep, I was looking at that justify word and I tend to agree that justify sounds like an ends to a means rather than something like maybe support decisions in the future?
I had justify circled too, for what it's worth.
Paul, what do you think of support in place of justify?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either, but at the same time, part of the effort here is consistency between the comp plan and the town center plan and having the verbiage match might be the larger goal.
Right, but the comp plan will trump the town center plan.
That is true.
I mean, if you wanted to have one-
We're going to have one that's different.
Yeah, it could be this one.
No, it's, yeah, I'll buy that.
And if we, I'm, you know, I'm going to mark that as a change. So in the future, if you update our town center plan, update that word at the same time.
All right.
I'm cool with that change.
Yeah, we were questioning the confluence, was that the other one?
So Paul, if we want to, I don't know what your question was on page 21, where it says the plan does not provide, can you elaborate?
Okay. Yeah, I didn't understand why it says "does not," the word "not." And also, in the second line, you say- And also, in the second line, you say, "and the addition of this property to the inventory", I thought you were eliminating three text slots. So I didn't know what additional properties you're talking about.
How do I see?
Yeah, it would be the reduction of.
Where, I'm not sure where you're looking at this.
I think, I think what Paul's referring to, and keep me honest here, is the, is the actual text under, under C?
Yeah, and so that text from C comes straight from the Development Code. So we might need to amend the Development Code in the future to make that comprehensive plan.
So it's saying that the plan doesn't have adequate areas?
Well, the, the, the text is the criteria that we're applying to. So, I mean, that's, that's straight out of the, of C.
Yeah, I don't understand what that means, then.
I don't either.
Well, I haven't, we haven't marked. So that's something that could be updated in the future when we do omnibus of code amendments.
What's the intent of the finding? What's the meaning behind it?
Of that finding?
Yeah.
So that finding, I, I'm just, the proposed comprehensive plan map amendments does not change the underlying zoning districts or land uses. So that is letting us know that the underlying zoning will remain the same and the land uses currently on those parcels would remain the same.
And those aren't adequate?
They're adequate, yes.
So the "not" is in error. I'm looking at C, where it says "the plan does not provide adequate areas in appropriate locations."
I, I think part of the confusion here, if, if I'm reading this correctly, I mean, this is, I mean, the, the, the criteria is written, I mean, with the, I mean, almost with the baseline assumption of expanding or, I mean, and an additive thing. And, and we're, and we're doing sort of, because of the cleanup, we're doing the opposite of that. We're, we're removing things from the, from the plan map. So that's, I think that's where the, the disjunction or the cognitive dissonance lies. The crit, the criterion itself that we're applying doesn't exactly, doesn't exactly line up with the, with the action that we're taking.
So basically, it's saying that we're having to do something special to accommodate for land conditions?
Yeah.
Plan does not provide adequate areas in appropriate locations for uses normally allowed in this land use designation. So we have to do something special to accommodate for that. Is that the intent?
I, I think the, the intent that I'm reading out of that, kind of that goes along with the findings, is, is that, is that basically the, the change doesn't, doesn't modi, doesn't modify the, the underlying zoning or projected uses of lands involved.
Then it's written opposite of how it should be.
Very wonky. I mean, I, I absolutely agree with, with both you and Paul. But I, I think the, the spirit of it is that the change doesn't, doesn't muck with the, the underlying zoning. It's my, kind of on track.
Can we somehow get that clarified? Or at least easier to understand? If we're not understanding it, a lot of people aren't gonna understand it.
Need some more clarifying text, text for council.
Oh, we would need to...
We can't change that cri, we can't change criteria C.
Right.
When I get it, when it goes to council, if they have questions about this, I can clarify it better.
Possibly some more explanatory verbiage in the finding itself.
Well, we would have to make that change tonight.
So...
So we could add, "The proposed comprehensive plan map amendment does not change the underlying zoning districts or land uses. And they are appropriate. And they are in appropriate locations."
Is that even necessary?
Kind of gets back to that first sentence in C.
"The proposed comprehensive plan amendment does not change the underlying zoning districts and uses consistent with the provided areas and locations."
I mean, the finding to me is perfectly clear. That basically nothing's changed and nothing is impacting anything.
Yes.
Same old, same old. But then the part under C is really confusing.
And unfortunately, we can't change that. Because that would be a Development Code amendment. But it's flagged for future change.
Okay. So we can add in the finding, ignore item C.
Well, it's almost not applicable in this situation.
Yeah.
Applicable, but I did wanna, yeah. But I did wanna state that nothing would be changing from the underlying zoning.
Yeah, they don't seem to go together.
They don't, because it's not typically how, usually don't exclude, remove, I should say.
I mean, we just said the finding is nothing changed. And then the criteria C doesn't make any sense. The finding as a standalone is great, perfect. Nothing's changed. I just don't see how it ties to the criteria.
Does it well?
I mean...
It's fine. If we can't change it, we can't change it.
Always have a finding that says criteria C is not applicable.
Might just be less confusing.
Yeah, actually.
Because I, the, I, if I, if I remember correctly, I mean, there's, there's other, there's other findings that basically reiterate the same thing, that nothing is changing. Finding for D, it just doesn't change the projected need or any of the land use designation. We might be farther ahead, just saying that criteria C doesn't apply.
I like that.
Okay. So we would write a modification that the Planning Commission recommends removing criteria for, or finding C.
So the, so we have, we have to have a finding. So the finding would be, it's not applicable.
It's not applicable.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Okay, great.
Not applicable to the application.
Perfect.
All right. Let's, okay. Any other questions for staff? Take public comment here.
Oh, I, sorry. Did we wanna go back to the outlet? The Columbia Gorge Outlet question and the Confluence?
Yeah, I, I agree with Paul on that.
On which part?
The reference is on, what, on page 29. Changing Columbia Gorge Factory Stores to Columbia Gorge Outlets and removing, and, and the Troutdale's Urban Renewal Site, and just dropping the known as Confluence.
I would probably disagree with that. Maybe saying something to the effect is also known as, or commonly referred to as the Confluence. Because technically...
I'd go with also known as.
Pardon me?
I'd go with also known as. I don't know that it's common.
Because technically, it's still the urban renewal site, but we have so many documents that refer to it as the Confluence. It's marketed as the Confluence. That's true. We've just really gone that direction, I think, quite a bit. Commissioner Wilcox?
I think you're missing, when I was getting at on that one, it reads, "but includes the Columbia Gorge Factory Stores and the Troutdale's Urban Renewal Area." What I was suggesting is just getting rid of the word "the" in front of Troutdale's. That's not unnecessary access.
Urban Renewal Site?
So just dropping the "the", okay.
Drop the "the"?
Get rid of the, get rid of the "the",
Okay, I got it.
In front of Troutdale's.
Okay.
And then can we say, "Renewal Site also known as"? We could add that. Known as the Confluence, it's also known as the Confluence, rather than just known as the Confluence. Okay.
Okay, on the, I had a second modification on the Columbia Gorge Outlets. Maybe make it Columbia Gorge Outlets mall, mall with a lowercase "m" because there are stores, businesses in there that aren't outlets, like the Jiu-Jitsu School, for example. And also in that same paragraph, when you were talking about the boundaries of the Town Center, the southern boundary was southwest eight, southwest 8th Street. And there is no southwest 8th Street in Troutdale that I can find.
There is now.
That wasn't in the original comp plan text. I did not change that.
It is quite a way.
Yeah, I did, I did, did see that, that that was in the black, blueprint rather than red.
There's, there's just the southwest 8th circle.
Right.
But is it a border?
Well, if you look at, if you look at the actual map, it's southwest 7th.
It is, it does look, it's southwest 7th.
Then south, southeast 8th. And it's also a southern border. So it kind of jogs up, jogs north up to southwest 7th.
Why would it be 8th?
As far as southeast 8th?
Yeah, if you look, if you look at the mac, map closely, the blue, the blue dots are right along southeast 8th. And it jogs north up to southwest 7th.
I'm just wondering why it was done that way originally.
Well...
Could have been a mistake back when the comprehensive plan was adopted.
Could have been. The other, it's a little far-fetched, but southeast 8th is where the, is where that was the south end of that, of the initial plat. That's, that's where, that's where we're putting the south end of that, that's where the south end of that Hungry Hill District is going. Not saying they're, they're originally connected, but seems plausible in my head.
So we wanna change that to southeast?
Yes, and it's, so it would read, "and is generally located north of southwest 8th Street, south of the railroad tracks, and includes the Columbia Gorge Outlet Mall, Troutdale's Urban Renewal Site, also known as the Confluence."
Okay. Right. Okay, at this time, we'll take public testimony. And is there anyone online wishing to speak as a proponent to the application? Didn't unmute yourself? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent to the application? Neutral parties wishing to speak to the application this evening? Okay, with that, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved?
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Glantz, second by Commissioner Kestner to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Public hearing is closed. All right, we partially already beat some of this up.
Beat it up some more?
We always can.
That's your job, right? That's why you're here.
All right. And so we have, we are proposing one amendment to findings. And we are proposing text amendments to the resolution. Correct?
So you don't have, so the resolution is the draft, and you're not gonna adopt the resolution?
Well, the part, the comp plan, Town Center Plan.
Oh, Town Center Plan, yes, yes. Excuse me, yes.
We are amending or editing that?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, it would be, we were gonna move this forward as amended, with those amendments. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anyone?
Uh, it's Commissioner Wilcox. I didn't, I couldn't tell if justify got changed or not.
Oh, justify did it.
Did not?
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did.
Yeah, it's gone.
Oh, okay.
It got swapped with support.
Support, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, so those would be the, the amendments to the package. So we need, we just need one.
One what?
One motion.
One motion, yes. One motion.
And it would be as amended?
Correct.
And would cover all the amendments?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone feeling like?
Sure.
Here we go.
Um, I'll move that Planning Commission will recommend the Troutdale City Council approval of the land use case file LU-0015-2025-PA Town Center Overlay Map and Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments.
Can we put as amended?
As amended, thank you.
Terrific. Okay, and a second to that motion?
My second. It's Kevin.
All right. We have a motion by, by Commissioner Glantz, second by Commissioner Minkoff to approve case file LU-0015-2025- to approve case file LU-0015-2025 Town Center Overlay Map and Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments as amended by the Planning Commission. Any discussion on the motion? All right, let her rip.
All right. Commissioner Glance?
Yes.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Kester?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Herr Stephenson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Why can't they all be that easy?
What's that?
Why can't they all be that easy?
What they are. Okay, here we go. Now, middle housing.
Not that easy.
Yeah. All right. Who has this? What, you do?
I do.
Bad for you.
Buckle up, everyone. Okay, so everybody in the packet should have received, I guess you would call it a two-pager instead of a one-pager. It kind of goes over the background of middle housing and then some amendments and changes that were done at the state level this year. So what you're about to see in this presentation is pretty much verbatim what you had on the white sheet, but it's just a little easier to go through rather than everybody reading off the sheet. So let's go ahead and get started. So, middle housing land divisions under Senate Bill forty-five, or four-five-eight. Senate Bill four-five-eight was adopted by the Oregon Legislature in 2021 and applies to middle housing land divisions permitted on or after June 30th, 2022. The bill allows lot divisions for middle housing that enable them to be sold or owned individually. House Bill 2001 legalized middle housing typologies in many cities around the state. Senate Bill four-five-eight is a follow-up to House Bill 2001 and requires jurisdictions to allow middle housing lot divisions for any House Bill 2001 middle housing typology, duplex, triplex, quadplexes, townhomes, and cottage clusters. Built in accordance with ORS 197.758. For example, a single lot can be divided using a middle housing land division process to create several lots to then be used for middle housing typology such as townhomes. These lots may have reduced requirements such as setbacks, frontage, or lot dimensions based on zoning. So essentially, Senate Bill four-five-eight allows for lot divisions of a parent lot solely for ownership opportunities of middle housing units. For example, if a side-by-side duplex, you use the lot division, it can be, you can then purchase one side of the duplex and the land around it. And the diagram, this is a diagram of a triplex, so you'll see the black dotted line is what's considered the parent lot with a triplex. And it was divided into three separate lots, and that's what you'll see is the orange dotted line that can then be owned individually. And here's a couple of frequently asked questions. And a lot of this came from the city website, just for the background information. So bear with me, it does get a little verbatim. SB four-five-eight requires a middle, or sorry, does Senate Bill four-five-eight only apply to new construction? SB four-five-eight requires a middle housing lot division application, or sorry, a middle housing lot division application to submit a proposal for development of middle housing in compliance with the Oregon Residential Specialty Code and land use regulations applicable to the original lot or parcel allowed under ORS 197.758. This means that any lot division proposal will need to demonstrate compliance with both applicable building code and Senate Bill 2001 middle housing code in order to be eligible for the lot division under Senate Bill four-five-eight. While middle housing built after implementation will meet these criteria, middle housing built prior to implementation may not be eligible. How would this, how would this work? How would this work if the city allowed detached middle housing units? The Senate Bill Lot Division would, would work the same with detached middle housing as it would for attached middle housing. So, so long as the parent lot met the middle housing criteria, including frontage, lot size, lot coverage, et cetera, when the lot could be divided for ownership opportunities, then the lot could be divided. What is the difference between a partition and Senate Bill four-five-eight? A partition is a type of land use process that creates new legal lots. Those lots are legal lots. Those new lots would be granted full development rights. The Senate Bill four-five-eight Lot Vision, MHLDs, as we call them for middle housing land divisions, allow the creation of new lots within a legal parent lot solely for the purpose of ownership opportunities. These new lots created from Senate Bill four-five-eight are not granted additional development rights and must be maintained to meet the criteria applicable to the parent lot. This is where we get to the update. So there's an update to Senate Bill four-five-eight via House Bill 2138. I think it was actually July 17th, not July 30th. But so on July 17th, 2025, the Senate passed House Bill 2138 amending Senate Bill four-five-eight. Previously, Senate Bill four-five-eight Lot Division did not grant additional development rights to middle housing, to a middle housing lot. Even if you owned a unit of middle housing on its own lot, it would still be considered middle housing, not as a new single detached unit. Through House Bill 2138, local governments are able to allow ADUs in conjunction with middle housing. However, it remains the, an option for any local government rather than a requirement. A city may prohibit or add approval criteria to the allowance of new ADUs on a lot or parcel resulting from a middle housing land division. So for example, if a parent lot has an existing single-family residence with an ADU, through House Bill 2138, the lot may now be divided through a middle housing land division, and the newly created lot may be allowed to contain one of the middle housing typologies such as a duplex or triplex. So here's a diagram off to the right, and it shows how, and again, the black dotted line is the parent lot that has a single-family residence and an ADU. They went through the middle housing land division and separated the lot into two lots. So now the newly created lot with a proposed duplex, meaning that an ADU can now be on a lot that had, a single-family residence and ADU can now be on its own lot through middle housing land division.
Quick question on that. So in, in that sort of scenario that's laid out there, the, I mean, or is the, is the idea that the, the middle housing lot division would be done in preparation for the building of that duplex?
Correct.
And then, I mean, if somebody, so then you have, say you build a side-by-side duplex, could that then be divided further? You wanted both sides of the duplex to separate?
No, so for middle housing land divisions, once the lots are divided, they're no longer allowed to be divided further. Also, the newly created lots would still need to meet base standards, and again, sometimes those are different depending on the typology of development, but they would still need to meet lot standards. So for example, if this were a triplex, it would have to be triplex lot standards if they were going to put a triplex there. If they're putting a duplex there, they need to meet the frontage requirements, the width requirements, depth requirements for a duplex. So you can't further divide it down and continue doing smaller, smaller, smaller.
Right, yeah, it just, it, the way this was worded, there seemed to be a risk of, of, of a cascade of subdivision that, that seemed problematic.
It's a good catch. I went pretty high overview and didn't go into all the nitty-gritty, because we'll be diving into that in the next several.
I have a question.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Thank you. In the original bill, it discussed the fact that the the subdivision for middle housing lots would not create, and I'm trying to find the wording here, would not create any additional ability to do construction, but only if it were permitted in the, in the, in the parent lot. Right? So in other words, I could own triplex unit one in its own lot, and I can buy and sell, but I can't tear it down and build a new building there because I can't, I don't have new construction rights in this middle housing lot.
Correct, for existing, for existing dwellings that were that, that were divided.
Existing, but if, so if, if there were only, so in this case of the duplex, where there is only ADU and the single-family residence, it could now be split, but that, that lot, which now has a duplex, didn't have anything, so building a new building there is acceptable.
That is with the new House Bill 2138, the amended. Or if you had a vacant lot, say a large lot, and you went through just regular middle housing land division process, then you could divide that up into X number of lots and put on, say, a bunch of either attached or detached townhomes for the purpose to be sold individually rather than a row home development. So essentially, since the diagram we're seeing here was divided using middle housing, that duplex could not be further divided. But previously.
It could have been divided into three additional lots and three individual ADUs could have been put there instead of a duplex.
Not ADUs, but maybe townhomes.
Okay.
Or cottage cluster could have been put on this newly created lot, anything within the middle housing typology, which is townhomes up to cottage clusters.
And so now you would have, let's say, five dwellings on this parent lot, when the parent lot, the parent lot would have to be zoned to accept five dwelling units initially?
No, because the lot is, while it's still called the parent lot, it's being divided. So now they're technically two separate lots, but they're being divided from the parent lot. So what that means is, this is where it gets really in the weeds. So what that means is, you have, say, one lot, say it's 10,000 square feet in our LDR one zone. Let's just use that as an example. That's a large, that's one of our largest lots that we allow in the city. And you have your single-family residence with an ADU, and you're in one corner of that large lot. And you have frontage in order to divide that lot where you can put something else on it. You can divide it maybe once, maybe twice throughout, through one middle housing process, but each individual lot that's created from this parent lot then can only have one type of middle housing typology. So it can either have a duplex, triplex, quadplex, or cottage cluster. That parent lot, just like a partition or a subdivision, is no longer one solid lot. It's just saying that that parent lot has to be large enough for you to divide it. And that's really what it's coming down to, where that way you're not creating lots that don't meet base standards. And you have a bunch of tiny homes on it because ADUs are not permitted through middle housing as far as a typology.
Well, I just meant multiple housing. It, it, I'm just wondering if this is a backdoor way to get more, more buildings?
Essentially.
On a, on a lot that would otherwise not be permitted to, you know, without this mall, without the, excuse me, without the middle housing lot development allowance, it wouldn't otherwise be allowed to put six dwelling units, but now through this process, we can.
Essentially, the easy answer is yes. So House Bill twenty, 2001 was created for, was basically created for infill. In order to, the idea from the state was to create infill within cities. So instead of having a single-family residence on a large lot, now that person, they don't use that whole lot, they can create infill by dividing that lot and putting another type that typically wouldn't, you wouldn't have a duplex and a, and a single-family residence on that lot, because the zone says 10,000 square feet. Now with middle housing land division, House Bill three, or four-five?
Eight.
Eight, yeah, I get those numbers. Four-five-eight, now you're able to divide them and create further infill. And then the amendment is saying that just because you built an ADU does not mean you can't still divide that really large lot and put another middle housing on, middle housing typology. A lot of what House Bill 2138 did is actually cleaning up language of Senate Bill four-five-eight, but there are a couple of small nuances, one of which is that now you can have an ADU and a single-family unit on a parent lot, which previously you weren't able to do. Previously, it was mainly for if you had duplexes, triplexes, a single owner owns a duplex, they ran out both sides, you live in one, run out the other. You could divide it down the middle and sell the other side so someone could buy it. That was the original, so that increases homeownership.
Yes.
And then it continued, it kind of progressed a little bit to where now, just because I have a single-family residence and an ADU, I can divide my.
Commissioner Allen?
Hi. So just, just from a pure scientific standpoint, they look, these, these measures in House Bill, they apply to cities over a certain size in which it includes the entire Portland metro region. And although Troutdale isn't technically of proper size, they said, well, we're going to include Troutdale because it's part of the metro area. And here's, here's my base concern. I don't know if you know, I'm an engineer, I used to be a farmer. Water is life. And the one thing that's different about Troutdale than the rest of the cities that surround us is Troutdale relies on well water. And that means Troutdale relies on permeation of water going into the ground. We get some water from the underground plume from the river for the lower wells. But the upper wells, no, it's, it's water infiltration into the ground. That's how we get our, our resupply of water. Well, they're treating Troutdale the same in wanting to densify it, but that's going to have an effect on our well water. And I just can't help but wonder if a hydrologist was ever consulted in this whole thing? Because from a scientific standpoint, it just seems wrong.
I can't speak to that as far as how the House bills went. I will say that this does, whether we're a part of the metro or not, incorporate Troutdale because it's for cities larger than 10,000, which Troutdale is, so we would meet that. I think what a lot of this also comes down to is the city does housing capacity study every five years. And part of that is also showing that we have the resources to be able to, you know, for so much growth within 20 years. And with that, if there, we need to be able to do growth, this is now part of the new rules that DLCD is requiring, that we also look at this, how many properties can meet these standards to be able to be divided through middle housing land divisions and incorporate that into our housing capacity analysis study. So, and part of that process is also included with resources. So when they were created, the state was creating this, these several different laws. I'm not sure if they spoke to, you know, because every city is different. But I know it's just, it's a way to create infill, and they left smaller cities out under 10,000 for the purpose of allowing them to continue to develop with single-family homes rather than infill middle housing typology. infill middle housing typologies.
Yeah, so I've, I've been involved for quite a while, as you know. And I don't remember ever consulting a hydrologist in any of these. We were looking at things like, what is our sewer size? What is our pipe size? Where does it go? Can we service this area or not? Um, we're looking at the infrastructure. We're not looking at well water replenishment. And it just seems like this would be, this could be one of those episodes on engineering disasters if we don't do that. Um, so I have my, I have my real concerns about this just because of what I've seen in my past. Um, can we bring that up with maybe our city manager and attorney?
Well, Commissioner Allen, this is state law now. Um, I would suggest maybe, you know, contacting your legislature. Voicing your concern.
Well, state, state law can be fought on, on grounds that they did not consider. Um, all I'm asking is that we actually think about what we're about to do and see if it's going to harm us. I don't think the legislature really thinks about exception cases. At least it's not been my experience.
Uh, but the thing is, is that census is state law is a requirement for us to put into our code.
Well, this is Commissioner Minkoff. It doesn't.
That's why I suggested the attorney.
It says here, however, it remains an option for any local government rather than a requirement. A city may prohibit or add approval criteria to the allowance of new ADUs on a lot or parcel resulting from a middle housing land division. So aren't, aren't they saying that the local government can approve or disallow these?
Up to, okay, so this, I'll just get to this slide and then I, Commissioner Glance, I see uh, you, you have your hand up. So I'll just say this real quick and then I'll come back. Uh, so this is like basically our next step is that the city currently doesn't have any regulations allow, uh, allowing Senate Bill four, five, eight, middle housing land divisions within development code. What currently what you just read, uh, Commissioner Minkoff, is that you were reading the, uh, Senate Bill twenty one thirty eight. So previous to that was, or House Bill twenty one thirty eight. Senate Bill four, five, eight, which a lot, we need to allow middle housing land divisions is not currently within our code. So that's step one. We need to do that first and foremost. And then step two is what I have here, next, over the next several months, staff and planning commission will work together to produce criteria or standards for incorporating both bills into the TDC. That doesn't mean we have to, as far as for the Senate Bill twenty one thirty eight. But what we have to do is we have to put Senate Bill four, five, eight into our code. And then we can decide whether or not during that process, we want to allow ADUs specifically. Because that's specific to ADUs. Currently, we have, say, for example, we have a couple of properties in the city that were divided through middle housing land division. They were done using the state criteria because we don't have anything within our code, uh, for that process. Currently, since the city does not have any requirements to allow ADUs on said lots, we cannot allow them to have either internal or external conversions. Uh, internal conversions or external ADUs on those lots. That's up to us to decide whether or not we want to create criteria for lots that were divided through middle housing to allow for an ADU on top of the middle housing typology, or we don't have to allow it. And that's something, that's a discussion that we'll be having through this process. So what you're reading is the newly, the newest one, um, and which you are correct, we don't have to. But we do need to do middle housing land divisions. Uh, that is, we do need to do that step uh, regardless. And then during that process, we could either add criteria or decide, no, once it's divided, you can't put an ADU on it. That's up to the city to decide.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Glance.
Yep, I haven't followed some of the new bills, but I know initially, one of the concerns voiced by cities, especially smaller ones, was the infrastructure. It's like, how do we recoup costs? Because at the time, and, uh, tell me if this is still true or not, we couldn't add in a requirement if they split the lot or they put additional buildings on for extra SDC charges or extra line connections. Um, and basically, rightfully so, the concern is, how are we supposed to support this without a tax base? And I don't see that that has been changed in any of the current bills, that they're not addressing that anywhere. I mean, how can you expect somebody to, you know, keep up a road when not everyone's paying for it?
So currently, since this bill, uh, Senate Bill, or House Bill twenty one thirty eight was just adopted and therefore it was enacted in July, uh, it's still fresh and DLCD and DLCD, DLCD and LCDC are still writing the rules for Senate Bill uh, twenty one thirty, or House Bill twenty one thirty eight. So we don't have all of the information yet. I have sat in two different meetings so far with DLCD um, regarding the newest bill of twenty one thirty eight. And basically what they said is they're still writing some of the rules for it and how it's going to apply, whether that is a question that came up from other members in the, uh, meeting. Um, and basically they said, you know, we're going, we don't even have a fax sheet out yet, uh, for the new uh, House Bill. Um, so that's something that DLCD is currently working on. And they're hoping to get us some more information on the newest bill, uh, by the first of the year. Um, but they're still working with their rule makers as far as creating the rules for implementation of the new bill and, um, how jurisdictions can go about implementing. So I believe that's part of what they're still looking through, um, because there's still, I know part of it, the bill is enacted, but they're still, uh, open to questions and comments to help try to feed their um, frequently asked questions sheet that they put out.
But you know, not even mentioning things like fire coverage and police coverage that, you know, are already being pretty difficult for us. Adding in a lot of expenses without a revenue on the backend seems like a bad idea, to put it mildly. And then a question on the parent lot. Does the parent lot setbacks stay even once the lot has been divided? So if you're on a, what used to be the R tens, you'd still have the twenty foot and fifteen foot setbacks.
Correct.
And is that between buildings or just on the property lines?
So that's where, that's the primary, um, for example, like that's the front and rear setback are the ones that really haven't changed. And this is something we do have in our code currently. And that was for House Bill two thousand one, when middle housing first came on the scene. Um, and that was in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Um, and that is where you see what we call zero lot lines to where setbacks as far as front and rear still apply. But you can have a, uh, building that is constructed, uh, or several states, three buildings, like a row home, townhomes, that are constructed where one side or both sides have zero lot lines, meaning they're attached. So then they wouldn't have any setbacks, uh, even though they're on their own lot. It's essentially kind of like a condo lot or condo plat where you own the, you're owning the land and the structure above it, but you're right next to your neighbor. And that's like, if you take a duplex, the classic duplex where you have entrances on either side and you just split it right down the middle where the garages are, how they're still connected, now that would, each of those two lots would now technically have what they call a zero lot line connecting them. So the front and rear setbacks and then side setbacks do, but it also depends on zone and, and things like that, but uh, but that's also just based on the zone itself. But the front and rear setbacks still definitely apply.
And will parking, uh, requirements still apply?
Uh, it depends on if they're in the CPEC location.
Okay.
Okay. So this is law now.
Correct.
Right? And so just so we're clear, they've made a law, they've written a law, they voted on a law, they passed a law, but they really don't know what's in it, right? We don't know what's in it.
They know how it's going in it. They know what's in it. They're trying to figure out how to implement. What's the process for implementation?
Of
the law.
Of the law.
But we really don't know what the standards are. And we don't know how it's going to affect the communities that we're doing this work in, really.
Basically, we know what the law is, we just aren't sure how to apply it.
Well, I think Commissioner Glance brings up a really good point. When you take a lot where the infrastructure is designed for one single family residence and we're now putting five on there on the same amount of dirt. How does that work?
So for Senate Bill four, five, eight, because that came out in twenty twenty two, there are rules and implementation for that bill. There just aren't any rules or implementation for the amendments to that law. So for Senate Bill four, five, eight, there are requirements, and this is what we currently do for, say, ADUs, where they have to have a sep- if they're on a separate lot, whether it's in, say, a, a duplex that's divided down the middle. Let's just use that as a classic example. They're now required, if they had a single water meter, to have two water meters, have their own water lines, their own sewer lines. Um, I can't speak to SCC's part of it, because I'm not entirely sure about that. Uh, but I do know, like, so that, as far as infrastructure, as far as utilities, they are required to have their own. If it's a triplex, same thing. Townhomes or row homes that are created with zero lot line, each have to have their own water main, their own sewer wa- their sewer line and their own utilities. Um, so that, we do know how to implement four, five, eight. We just haven't implemented it into work.
And what about things like, um, notice requirements?
For.
Neighbors.
Neighbors for, uh, that is something I have to double check the four, five, eight, but I believe, so middle housing, middle housing land divisions are a type two. So they are noticed as a type two. They're a type two application. Um, we don't, some larger cities, but we don't, and I'm not going to go into details on this because it's only going to muddy the waters. Uh, but there is such thing, it's called an expedited land division, which that's a type one. We don't do those here. We're not required to, by law, to, to do those. Some larger cities do. But middle housing land divisions are a type two process, same noticing. I think the noticing is actually less, but we'll just follow the same type two process because there's no sense in having weird distances. I believe it's a hundred feet rather than two hundred and fifty feet. We still follow, we're just going to still follow the same process as a type two, because there's no sense in reinventing the wheel.
We actually paid people to do this.
Oh, I I lost it.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, um, so to Chair Stephenson and Commissioner Glance's point, um, when we designed our infrastructure, like our feeder lines, um, we didn't actually plan for this. And so there could be some consequences, um, to our infrastructure. And not at first, you know, you're going to accommodate one here, one there, but as it expands, then you're in trouble and you're going to have to rip up some infrastructure.
I will say, uh, in my experience, uh, I implemented, uh, twenty twenty, or the House Bill twenty, or two thousand one, when I was in the Hillsborough jurisdiction. Um, not many people come in for. Here in the city, we've had three already, two already. Um, one is currently being built. Um, that's the only one that's being built. So I'm not necessarily afraid of being, having a massive influx. Uh, however, to your note about the infrastructure, every time they update, uh, a House bill or a Senate bill, they also have to update the state building codes. Um, and that also includes for, you know, public works type building codes, all get updated at the same time. Uh, and then they get rolled out the same. So that's why, uh, actually, I would say building codes get updated far more regular, regularly. Um, so they are also aware of what they have to change and what they have to do and, um, now, I can't speak to House Bill twenty one thirty eight, but I can't speak to, uh, SB four fifty eight, that, uh, they're aware of the changes. And I think that's also what comes into different TSPs, because that applies to the different, uh, TSP, like, as you update that, you have these in mind. Um, whenever we do housing needs analysis or housing capacity study, that all feeds into this, uh, as well for what um, jurisdictions have to plan for. Uh, and, because you need to be able to have uh, enough land for growth for twenty, uh, twenty years of growth. And so that's also includes, like, our public works also has to plan for twenty years of growth on, on our sewer system, on our water system. So they are also planning for that, and that's why they have updates that they're constantly doing throughout the city as well.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a, a problem at first. It's just the change over time. Um, it's going to take some accommodation and infrastructure tends to get rather old before it gets replaced and Troutdale's is rather new in comparison. Like, we don't have the hundred year infrastructure that Portland has. Um, but we're, we're more on the earlier side. I mean, it's going to take some time, as, as just some concerns.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Wilcox.
Uh, thanks, Chair Stephenson. Um, I have quest- some questions on your diagram that has the ADU, the single family and the duplex. Uh, I think I heard Dakota, you say the ADU is not a middle housing typology. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, one of my questions was, um, so it sounds like, say you had a detached ADU, a, uh, a tiny house, for example, in somebody's backyard. Sounds like that could probably not be divided into a separate ownership lot. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, then referring to your diagram, was the fact of the ADU with this single family residence that, did that qualify it as a parent lot allowing the duplex or?
Correct, so.
Well, my, my question is, could they have done a duplex without the ADA, ADU having been there?
Yeah, yes, they, yes, they could have. Um, so that, this was, this was an example of what changed through, that what we could potentially allow in the city. This isn't a requirement, it's a potential. Uh, but yes, if the ADU was not there, then they could still, uh, as a have a parent lot and divide that and would have a duplex or some sort of middle housing typology on the newly created lot through Senate Bill four, five, eight.
I, I don't, I don't understand why they couldn't. Why can't the duplex be split into two lots? Because that, that seemed to be the benefit of this, uh, one of the benefits they were advertising for this legislation to allow individual ownership for, uh, you know, attached units in particular. Townhouses or duplexes, triplexes, et cetera.
So, so that is, so that is currently allowed, Commissioner Wilcox. So, so for example, let's just say, right now, if somebody has a duplex on a lot, they could go in and do a middle housing land division or even the lot was big enough, they could just do a simple partition and create, um, an attached, you know, a duplex that's attached, that's, you know, we're occupy, I mean, then you could sell it legally.
Yeah.
You're creating two lots.
But the reason why this one wouldn't is because it was created, it can't be further divided. So you can't continuously snowball the divisions. For example, in this diagram, if that were a triplex, you could not then, the lot that's now created through middle housing that has a triplex on it, you cannot further divide that lot into three more lots because it was a lot that was done through middle housing. If it was just partitioned instead of going through middle housing, then you could further divide that lot through middle housing. But you can't, you can only divide a lot through middle housing one time.
So is, is there a, is, is part of this a matter of sequencing? Because like, Because, like, and to make that diagram, I mean, a little more logistically plausible. So imagine for a moment that that is a corner lot, and the duplex then has frontage. If that, if, when the lot was middle housing, if the middle housing division from the outset was known that they wanted to split that duplex up by, I mean, for dual ownership, is that plausible? Could they say, when the duplex is built, that we're not, we're not making one middle housing lot, we're making two?
I think, yes, I think this is really looking at infill standards and looking at existing properties that exist. They're giving property owners more options for creating additional lots and creating additional housing. Whereas, somebody comes in and they're doing a large subdivision, right? And in that subdivision, you can also have middle housing. You are planning for more, and it can give you more options through the subdivision process.
And I guess the other question that I had was, I think they were sort of alluded to in part of your presentation, but there was a, there was a note there that said, pretty much every middle housing thing that's built after, whether the House, after 2001 or after, certainly after Senate Bill 458, is going to, is going to have building standards that allow it to be divided. So duplexes, triplexes that are built after a given date are gonna, are going to fulfill requirements that will allow them to be divided, but older things may not. How strict are those requirements? Like, what is the likelihood that, that a side-by-side duplex that was built in 1974 is going to meet the requirements to be split down the middle?
Well, I actually had someone come in and do a middle housing land division on an older duplex, and they had to go in and retrofit to make sure that the walls were fire-rated. But they made it work.
And I was going to say, so hypothetically, you've got an R10 lot somewhere, an older home on it, and you just don't want to mess with the avocado carpet and those things. So you just start over. Okay, I then could divide the lot and put three triplexes on each piece.
If you have enough space to meet the original lot standards of the Development Code.
You would.
If each lot meets the development, like, the lot standards for a triplex, then you could.
You would.
Yeah.
So I guess theoretically, the downside to that would be we're taking something that was designed to have one residence on it, and we're putting six in the same amount of space.
That is the entirety of infill. Yeah, you are correct.
You are correct, yep.
That, that's basically, at the bare bones, that's what House Bill 2001, Senate Bill 458, that's exactly what they did.
And so as long as they don't need to use the restroom or drink any water, drive a car, or anything like that, we're golden.
So what I will say is, there's the last thing, is we're going to be discussing this over the next several months, I feel like it's going to take. Because we, first off, we need to look about how, staff needs to look at how we're going to implement this into our code. And then we need to discuss that here, probably through some work sessions, Planning Commission. And then during that time, we also need to decide whether or not we want to implement House Bill 2138 and allow ADUs to be on lots that were divided using middle housing. And if so, are we going to follow the same regulations that we currently do in our code for ADUs? Or are we going to have a subset of requirements? So that's, that's why this is going to, obviously, as we, you've, everyone just tonight, it's really a confusing situation. It's a lot. And then we're, so we're going to be having to discuss this. And with the ultimate result of a code amendment that receives Planning Commission's recommendation to City Council for adoption, so we can at least get Senate Bill 458 into our code. That's the primary change. The new one didn't change a whole lot, as we know right now. But the main one we need to do is Senate Bill 458.
Any additional questions for staff? We're excited.
I was going to say, my, my only question would be, what can we do to do as little of this as possible, or at least not have it cost us money?
The least amount possible would be making sure that we get the requirements for Senate Bill 458 entered into our code. Because during that time, we can just say, we can keep it as is, because it's up to the city to not allow ADUs on any lot that was divided through middle housing. That's how it's currently written in 458.
Okay.
So we can just not allow anything further. And that's up to us to decide.
All right.
Yeah. Well, that was going to be, I knew that was going to be, it's a big one. Very confusing, it's a lot to try to wrap your head around. I've read it about a million times over the last three weeks, so, for two weeks.
Sub-communications, great. We're having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park coming up later October, later this month. I believe it is on Wednesday, October 28th. From 1:30 to 2:30. I know that invitations were sent out, so check your email. You guys can all make it. I don't think I have any additional information to share. Do you have anything else to go to?
This has been the main thing that I've been reading up on the last several days. Other than that, we're just, you know, as far as the planning divisions going, community developer, we've just been chugging along. We should have some applications coming in that Nick and I have been speaking with some people about. I know we have some pre-apps, but nothing that's super major. And I don't think I have anything, as far as applications go, coming to you all in the near future, so.
All right. Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, so I just, I appreciated the public comment that we got. People really do feel that we don't have enough parking, but the state requires less. I know that when I go to downtown Troutdale to grab a snack or eat lunch, and I don't find parking, I, I move on. And sometimes I just don't even try anymore. Just as a comment, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Minkoff?
Long night, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Kestner?
Just a couple of things. I know as the, as the Home Forward project is wrapping up, I am starting to kind of put together a little bit of a slideshow of beginning-to-end pictures from the south end of it. So once, once I get that thrown together, I'll be passing that around to anybody who's interested. Also, to Commissioner Allen's question and thoughts on, on water percolation, while, while we were discussing, I did, I did a little bit of digging. And at, at least according to the 2022 Troutdale Water Quality Report, the city wells for Troutdale are all extremely deep, I mean, 450 feet plus, and are, are two aquifers down with a lot of impermeable clay in between. So my, my recollection from, from my geology classes in undergrad, percolation down to those depths can take centuries. So, yeah, most of the water that, not that I think that stormwater and runoff and percolation is, and soil moisture and such is something we necessarily want to ignore, but for the purposes of the city water table, not, not something that, that this generation probably needs to be too terribly concerned about.
I was going to say, I think there's two that we're getting ready to take offline. I know there's one or two that we're getting ready to drill, new ones.
Yeah, but as a general rule, new wells are, and go deeper. Deeper, because the, I mean, everything, everything that we're currently pulling out of is like below the Blue Lake Aquifer and below the, the whatever shallow one is under the, sitting under the gravel. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty deep stuff.
Okay. Commissioner Wilcox?
Okay, thanks, Chair. A couple of things, I wanted to revisit the discussion during the MIG presentation about variances. I was confused, or I was hearing confusion about the 15% versus the 30%. My understanding was that 30% was in place at one time, and that that was a type 2, and then it was changed so that it dropped down to 15% was a type 2. So that gave Planning Commission access to anything over 15%. But the representative from MIG was making it sound like that the new variance limit was 15%. So that was kind of confusing to me. And I'm not sure about the 30%, is that the upper limit that no one can go above? Or could planning go even beyond the 30?
No, I, I think for clarification, you can go beyond 30, you can kind of go wherever the municipalities willing to let you go. But like with Fox, that one in particular, that development had a 30% variance in height attached to it, and it was a type 2. Okay, and so at that time, it was able to have a higher height threshold than the 15% that would be allowed today.
Without a lot of view.
So in other words, a staff decision allowed for 30% height,
Up to, yeah.
Up to 30% height variance, where today a staff decision would allow up to 15% height variance.
Yeah, but Planning Commission was free to approve 30%, right?
Or higher.
Right.
They can approve higher.
Basically, 29% before, now 14%, because then 50%.
Right, then it, but Planning Commission could do a 50% variance if they chose to. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, yeah, the other thing is, I'm wondering if we could get a final draft from the, from staff before something comes, before a, or it becomes a hearing subject, so we could get some of this cleanup work done for, for, goes before the public.
Fine.
For, for the, the grant, stuff that we're working on?
No, the, not like the, the hearing subjects, like the, the hearing we had tonight, or the map amendment. If we can see that paperwork before it actually comes before the public one more time. Or actually one time, because we never see, we never see the final draft until, till the public sees the final draft.
Right, so what I, I, so what I will do is, I will go ahead and make the amendments, and then I can, I will send it out to Planning Commission to, for all of you to review. And if I goofed something up, you can definitely reach out and let me know.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So I have everything.
Okay. And then last but not least, at our, one of our last meetings, there was a comment made on the record about some misleading or false statements that I made, and I said I would address those at tonight's meeting. And so here we go. Addressing the statement of record from the September meeting, where I made false statements referencing case file LU-00132022 Home Forward. I will state that I do not know who called who in regards to the development agreement. But I don't know how a city can initiate a development agreement without the developer being involved, as the city wasn't developing the property, or they owned the property. I'd have to think there's more than one party involved. Planning Commission held a public hearing on the initial application on August 24th, and at that hearing, it was continued to September 14th, 2022. At the August hearing, there was six written letters in opposition of the project, and seven people testified in opposition of the project. There was one neutral and one proponent, and I almost have to just discount the proponent, because it was the owner of Brem construction, who actually built the project. Planning Commission denied the final application 7-0. And just a reminder, you know, there was a reduction of 52 parking spots from what the code calls for at that time that we were enforcing. And I believe there was like, positive, I think there was like seven other variances to the, to the Development Code in addition to the vacation and the right-of-way. The right-of-way vacation was a type 4 application that was also denied and was denied by City Council. Now, when Home Forward reapplied, I do know that a mayor, a majority of the City Council and others, including myself, requested the, the application be bumped to a type 3 application. My reasoning was the amount of public testimony we received, when you look at, you know, you've got seven people writing letters, six people testifying in opposition, that's a lot. That's a lot for one project. And I felt that, given the application, it justified being bumped to a type 3 from a type 2. That was my opinion, others agreed, others did not. Now, I do know, the, the requests to bump it were denied by staff. And I felt at the time, this was a limit to, a limit in the public's process. And then we come to the development agreement. Other than the Confluence site, only other development agreement I can recall is Tyson's Place back in like August of 2005. That's like 20 years ago. And, you know, it's, it's not that these aren't done, they're just very uncommon. And they're not done very often. And, you know, there was also a right-of-way issue included with this. And it included dedicated public parking spots to a development, which is also not common. You know, and also includes parking spaces for that development that would be removed if the Second Street Bridge was built. And the Second Street Bridge is on, in my opinion, is on the TSP. And any parking spots that would be removed shouldn't have even been included in the, in the proposal, that being on the TSP. And I want to stress that none of our current staff, community development director, were employed at the time of any of these decisions. And whether it was a staff or developer, decision or combination of both, I don't know. I do feel that the reasons that I've stated, and again, can't say who, but our process was altered in a way that is not normal for Troutdale to limit the amount of public feedback. And I, I just felt that that, um, should have been handled differently, um, than what it was. And so that's my, uh, that's my reply. And, uh, if no one has any comment on that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I think you skipped, did you skip Sandy?
I did.
I did skip Sandy. I'm sorry about that, Sandy.
I don't really have anything to add, but thank you for not forgetting me.
We almost forgot you.
I'm, I'm going to say you didn't, so we're going to call, we're going to go cup half-full.
Thank you.
Chair Stephenson, I move we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, thank you. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Call next month?
I would say yes, I was just late.
Better late than never, but thanks for tuning in tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.